At this clock, I'll call this Common Council meeting in order for the month of April. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call roll, please.
Brown.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Booty.
Here.
Grattan.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Shanks.
Here.
Mayor, I'm here.
First, I have a business as the agenda approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Same.
Motion by Shanks, second by Schuster. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Next, we have the approval minutes of the previous meetings.
Same.
Motion by Brown, second by Grattan. Any questions on those? Any comments on those? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Approved minutes of intervening meetings.
Same.
Motion by Schuster, second by Brown. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Communications. Joe, do you want to speak, or do you want to wait until we get down to your agenda?
I could speak now. Again, introduce myself. I'm Joe DeYoung. Camera two, huh? Joe DeYoung with MSA Professional Services. I wanted to come tonight, introduce myself. I know you're very familiar with Mike Lau for the amount of years that he's been working for us and with his retirement. And Jason Lau, who is a son, who will be kind of become your new engineer, is what the intended plan is. But I'm the kind of regional manager for this area. I actually grew up in Randolph and live over in Cambria now, but I help out with MSA on the east side of Wisconsin. So basically, I'm coming here tonight, obviously, that you have a contract in front of you for MSA services. It's in regards to our CDBG application that we'll be filling out. I guess I'm here to make sure that, obviously, if there's things that we need to do, or things that we can take care of or help out with, that we're committed to Juno like we've always been. Mike Levy, obviously, helps us, and he's not fully retired, but he is enjoying his time, but he's available by phone and email and stuff, so everything still works. But we also know that with retirement, it's something to move on. But to introduce myself, that if there's concerns or issues that come up, or things that you have to talk about, we want to make ourselves available to you as much as possible. So again, I'm here for that purpose, and obviously, they have any questions regarding the contract. I'll be honest, we have revised our costs and provided it to you tonight, so that will be in your package, I think. But at the end of the day, like I said, it's more that we're committed to you like we've always been. And obviously, Mike is still available to us, but we appreciate all he's done, probably what he's done for you. But I have good faith in Jason, plus growing up here and stuff, that he's going to be able to pick up and go. So with that, if you have any questions for me, otherwise, I do appreciate the chance to talk.
Everybody from Finance happy? Thank you, Joe. Moving on, we have approved payments of bills, checks for $373,251.95. Vouchers for $469.06. Electronic transfers for $212,474.38. Is there a motion to approve the payment of bills?
Same.
Motion by Shanks, second by Grattan. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Shanks.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Payment of bills have been approved. Moving on, public appearances and citizens' comments regarding agenda items. The record show there are none. Now, we have Kevin Mueller in place proxying for Justin Fisher to have a presentation regarding the issuance and sale of the $2 million general bond obligation promissory note. Welcome.
Good evening. How's everyone doing? I appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you tonight. I know that you're probably wishing that it was Justin, but hopefully, I can answer your questions. In front of you this evening is a general obligation promissory note resolution. I think that the board had had the opportunity to look at some projections that Justin had provided, I think at your last meeting. At that point in time, he estimated this borrowing to be offered at roughly 1.75%. As of today, when the bonds were marketed, you took advantage of a very nice interest rate environment. The bonds were actually marketed at 1.56%, so less than what was anticipated. That's a 10-year borrowing, you know, at well under 2%. From a historical context, that's a great rate, but it also, in this market, is a very good rate. The difference between the estimate at 1.75% and where the bonds or the notes actually sold at 1.56% saved about $40,000 in additional interest costs over the life of the borrowing. One of the aspects of the financing that is a little bit different is that this qualified for bond insurance. So when we got ready to market the bonds, we looked at selling the bonds as a non-rated security without a rating, which is where you would have been without the bond insurance. We're paying a premium for the bond insurance and then selling them with the bond insurer's rating of AA. So we looked at the cost of the insurance relative to the cost without insurance, and that difference was a benefit to you of about $17,000. And so we felt it was, you know, it's a mercenary decision at that point. If it saves you money, it's worth considering. And so that's the direction that we suggested that you go, and I think that it really resulted in, you know, a benefit to the community. There should have been a three-page presentation that was forwarded to you earlier in the day. I'm not sure if everyone received it. There's a cover page. On the second page is a summary of the specifics of the borrowing, the dated date, the closing date. A couple of things I'd like to point out to you regarding that. The first is that the bonds or the notes are callable beginning on March 1st of 2028, so they can be prepaid at that point in time. So that's important to note. The other is the bond insurance, as we discussed earlier. And then the last thing that I wanted to point out to you as we're kind of reviewing this is the last page. On the third page, there's a summary of debt service that I think is really worth paying a little bit of attention to. So if you're reading left to right, the levy year is the year in which the budget is made. The year due is the year in which bond debt service payments are made. And then, beginning with your existing debt service, those are the annual payments that you've got remaining on your levy-supported debt. So for example, in your 2020 budget table on 21, you had $279,000 of levy-supported debt, debt that would be supported by your tax rate. The box in the middle is the summary of the new debt service schedule at 1.56% of your principal and interest payments. If you combine the existing debt with the total of the principal and interest in the middle, you'll get what now is going to be supported by the levy. So your current budget has levy-supported debt at $279,000. Next year, with this new borrowing, it would go up by about $85,000 to $369,000 roughly. And then, over on the right, you can see where it would go in 2022 and '23. Beginning in the year 2024 and moving forward, we've estimated what the debt service would be by issuing every other year an additional $500,000 for future capital needs at an interest rate of 3.5% just to show you how this would potentially fit into your overall capital plan moving forward. In the light green area, you'll see that, beginning in 2024, it would go up by $30,000 and then slightly increase through 2027, and then flatten out, assuming that's how you issue the debt in the future, at roughly $450,000. One last thing that I'll point out about your existing debt. You'll notice in the box that debt service beginning in the year 2028 increases when your existing debt is paid off. And that's intentional, obviously, to wrap this borrowing around your existing debt service so that it kind of evens out the tax impact at this moment. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have with regard to the financing structure or the accompanying resolution that you're considering.
Any questions? I think Justin covered it pretty well with us the last time he was here. Kevin?
Great, good. Well, if you talk to Justin, make sure you tell him I did a much better job.
Well, you brought back a much better rate.
There you go. I followed it really bad, right?
That's all I made her saw. No, we appreciate Baird's services. They've always been a good partner for the city of Juno.
Well, we're very, very happy to continue our relationship with you, and thanks for your trust. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good evening. You should have received a purchase agreement that you'll need to consider along with the resolution, and then if you could just port those along afterwards, we appreciate it.
Sean will take care of that.
Well, thanks.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks. I'll just stick around in case there's any conversation and stick around for the vote if you don't mind.
That's fine.
I'll be quiet, I promise.
There's extra seats here. Okay.
Take care.
No other questions on that topic right now? Moving on, reports of officials. Mayor. Yeah, we're all over the map with what we're doing here lately, but I don't think I really have anything that I have to discuss tonight officially. But we'll move on to clerk treasure. Sean, do you have anything?
Just that we did have reelection last week, as many of you are aware. Our three aldermen who are up for reelection, one unopposed, so that's all I've really got.
Congratulations to the three. It would have been embarrassing if you would have lost.
But if I meant that was the way it was supposed to be, that's the vote of the people.
Vote of the people. Moving on to written reports. Any questions on the building permits? Police department report, Juno Fire and Rescue report, or the EMS report? No question, move on. Reports and committees, commissions, and boards. We have our own favorite librarian here today. Jeanette Throun.
I think that's why he's sticking on. He just wants to hear my report, right? Yeah, I don't have any props.
You don't get anything like this in Randolph, Joe.
So I'll make this brief, but I do have a few things that I mentioned to you that happened in March, and I just want to follow up. So we had a Brought Fry fundraiser this past Friday. If you can go back about four days, it was spitty and cold, but people came out. And so this was in Watertown at Glenn's Market. And I would just like to personally mention all of the volunteers. We were there for seven hours. And so I think it's at least worth mentioning their names. So Ray Abitz and his wife Mary Webster Abitz, Sally Shenicki, Alan Cathy Heschley, Wayne Kickert, Graham Wagner, and yours truly, Jeanette Threane, were at the Brought Fry. And people walked away with smiles on their faces. We haven't heard about the proceeds yet, but we were happy with the turnout. I also mentioned to you last month that the rec department and the library were partnering for our first virtual program, and cartoonist Mike Artel came to us via Zoom, and we held two different programs for two different age groups. And we had 17 children and two parents learn how to cartoon. And the fun has been post-programming to see those kids come to the library and look for cartooning materials and seek out that further. So I consider it a huge success, and it was fun to partner for the first time with our new rec department director, Seamus. And then, you know, the Plinko Board was here last month, and we had 46 people that participated that week with the Lucko, the Plinko. And all 46 of those people walked away with a small prize and then an entry in our book drawing. So there were four book winners, and then a young man that walked away with our pot of gold full of chocolate coins that he said he'd share with his family. What's going on?
You just keep going.
It's too sad. Siri doesn't like my report. Or you. I don't know.
I can't.
All right, so on to serious stuff. We'll see what Siri thinks about this. Upon consideration of evidence, scientific research, health authority guidance, and industry practices, the Juno Public Library has determined that the quarantine of library materials is no longer necessary. We will continue with internal hygiene protocols proven most effective in mitigating the risk of spreading COVID-19. And if you are concerned about the lack of our 24-hour quarantine, which is currently what we've been doing, we do recommend that you self-quarantine any materials that you check out from the library. This has come out from the Department of Public Instruction, this recommendation. The CDC, protocols from industry standards like, for instance, Costco, Walmart, none of those big box stores are quarantining items from delivery to receiving. So we're just following the trend, but like my statement said, our sanitation and all of those protocols we've had in place since June 1st are still in place, and we are daily sanitizing for your safety. But once again, you get to decide your level of quarantine if you choose to self-quarantine items from the library. And the Monarch Library System is searching for a new system director. Not me. No, not me. Monarch. So here's just some stats. The Monarch Library System supports 31 member libraries that serve over 425,000 residents in four counties within a 2,000-square-mile radius. So if you know anyone that would like to be the director of the Monarch Library System, you can contact me, and I'll get you the website so that that person can apply. And last but not least, I've saved the best for last. Our adult services librarian Lisa Boer will be retiring from the Juno Public Library on Friday, May 7. And it took me a little while to figure out her years of service, but we have found out 24 combined years of faithful service to the library and 29 continuous years of service in some capacity to the city of Juno. She served, she and her husband, served as crossing guard. And so in some capacity, Lisa has served this community for 29 years. So the public is invited to express their appreciation and congratulations to Lisa during her final week of employment, and that's May 3rd through the 7th. And we will have a card there that patrons can sign. And then we'll also have little note cards that you can write a little personal note and tuck it in a box if you want something a little more sentimental. I would personally like to thank Lisa for three things that I think stand out. Her love of learning, her unique crafting talents that I don't have. So it stands out, and her personalized service. If you, for 24 years, came into the library, you knew she cared about you. You knew she knew what you were reading, and she had a suggestion for you. So we will miss that, and all those generations that benefited.
Thank you.
I'm done.
I'm not going to have anything to talk about next week?
No, that's all right.
We should be getting a plaque of appreciation at our organizational meeting, so... Yeah, known Lisa for all the while. She's been married to Bob, and yeah, she's done a good job for the city. Any questions for the library director? Seeing none. Moving on to planning commission. David?
Planning commission, we met. We talked with Jeremy Knoll from Fox City Builders about Auto Pet Care's expansion plans and moved those on. The building they're putting up is tremendous. It's going to be a beautiful building. It's not going to be a barn, a huge barn going up. It's going to be a beautiful property when they're finished. We heard discussions from Joe DeYoung from MSA regarding the development, possible developments of Watertown Memorial Property to help with the future housing needs for the city of Juno. There was good discussion as to possible changes here or there, suggestions for that. No action was taken on that. It was just informal. What do you think of this plan? What would you change? What do you, don't you like? Michelle Pilar was there. She runs the vet clinic at 525 South Fairfield. She was there to get information about possibly rezoning her property to do what she'd like to change into now that she does not have a vet on staff. That was our meeting. I have... I can get to it. There it is. We have a... The number's on top. Ordinance to amend Chapter 17.04.320, City of Juno Ordinance for Public Hearing Notice. The Common Council of the City of Juno ordains Section 17.04.320, zoning public hearing notice to hereby amend to change. From?
Move to forego the second reading of this ordinance and move for passage of ordinance amendment for Chapter 17.04.320.
Motion by Brown, second by Shanks, to forego the second reading and go directly to vote. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ordinance 17.04.30 has passed. Anything else from planning commission?
Nope.
Finance, Cheryl?
We did meet, and one of the big things that we discussed and will have an ordinance, or excuse me, a resolution on is the financing for the general obligation promissory note. Looked at that, and we're not complete yet with the projects that will be covered in that. That was one of the desires of the finance committee, that with this additional borrowing that we did, that we would have specifically what projects are to be done, and the monies will be for that with, rather than coming to, well, we should do this, or we should do that, and then not having any direction with it. So that will be handled in our May meeting. Ideas will be brought forward for that specifically. We also were made aware of the desire to have something called an American Rescue Plan Committee. There is money coming from the federal government because of President Biden's American Rescue Plan, and that monies that are coming here need to be, again, handled discreetly wisely. And the thought is that there may be projects or things that need to be done within our community that we, as a council, may not see. And so looking to potentially incur help from the community, as well as council members, as well as employees of our city, to have a full, rounded perspective, because the idea is to help everybody out of this, to rescue our community. So that will be brought forward further. We don't have all the dynamics of it yet as it's not all been given by the federal government, so that is yet to come with us. We discussed about the CDBG, approved the CDBG-EDG, and the administration piece of that. We had two different proposals for those costs we're administering at, and we will have a resolution on that as well in a little bit. We did go with MSA as the ones to handle that. It was sent to us from Public Works to look into purchasing a new street sweeper. We declined that at this point in time. We sent it back, said, Scott, we'd like you to see if you can find us a used one. Understand that ours is old, that we've got costs incurred with that. Had only brought forward one quote for us. And so we said, we've asked everyone, give us a couple, three of them, and is there anything else out there? So at this point in time, that has gone back to him as well. We did go into closed session for a little bit. We came out of closed session. There's still some further research that needs to be done before any final determination is made over the subject that was discussed at that point in time. In old business, we looked at, or heard that the Old City Hall, there are some people that are interested in the Old City Hall, which that's a huge answer to my prayers. We would like to be able to move that building on and keep going from here. Jason White continues to serve at the community center, is doing a good job. And we will continue to search for proprietor for that. Last year was not a good year for looking for a proprietor, but if you know of anyone who's interested in a business like that or a facility, it's ready to rock. It just needs somebody to come in as a proprietor, and we'd be happy to have the right person there. So going forward with Ordinance 842020, resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $2 million general obligation promissory note. Come on, there we go. Whereas on March 9th, 2021, the Common Council of the City of Juno, Dodge County, Wisconsin, the city adopted a resolution that set sale resolution, providing for the sale of general obligation promissory notes, the notes, for public purposes, including street improvement projects and other capital improvements and acquisitions, collectively, the projects. Whereas the Common Council hereby finds and determines that the project is within the city's power to undertake and therefore serves a public purpose as that term is defined in Section 67.04, Part I, Part B, Wisconsin statutes. Whereas the city is authorized by the provisions of Section 67.12, Part 12, Wisconsin statutes, to borrow money and issue general obligation promissory notes for such public services purposes. And whereas, and I just lost it, I apologize. It is the finding of the Common Council that is necessary, desirable, and in the best interest of the city to sell the notes to Robert W. Baird &amp; Company Incorporated, the purchaser, pursuant to the terms and conditions of its note purchase agreement attached here too as Exhibit A, and incorporated herein by this reference, the proposal. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the city that Section 1, authorization of sale of the notes. For the purpose of paying the cost of the project, there shall be borrowed pursuant to Section 67.12, Part 12, Wisconsin statutes, the principal sum of $2 million from the purchaser in accordance with the terms and conditions of the proposal. The proposal is hereby accepted, and the mayor and the city clerk or other appropriate officers of the city are authorized and directed to execute an acceptance of the proposal on behalf of the city. To evidence the obligation of the city, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to make, execute, issue, and sell to the purchaser for, on behalf of and in the name of the city, notes aggregating the principal amount of $2 million for the sum set forth on the proposal plus accrued interest to the date of the delivery. Section 2, terms of the notes. The notes shall be designated general obligation promissory notes, shall be issued in the aggregate principal amount of $2 million, shall be dated May 4th, 2021, shall be in the denomination of $5,000 or any integral multiple thereof, shall be numbered R-1 and upward. shall be in the denomination of $5,000 or any integral multiple thereof, shall be numbered R dash one and upward and shall bear interest at the rates per annum and mature on March first of each year in the years and principal amounts as set forth on the pricing summary attached hereto as exhibit B one and incorporated herein by this reference. Interest shall be payable semi-annually annually on March first and September first of each year commencing on March one, twenty twenty-two. Interest shall be computed upon the basis of a three hundred and sixty day year of twelve thirty day months and will be rounded pursuant to the rules of the municipal securities rulemaking board. The schedule of principal and interest payments due on the notes is set forth on the debt service schedule attached to here as exhibit B two and incorporated here and by this reference, the schedule. Section three, redemption provision. The notes maturing on March first, twenty twenty-nine and thereafter are subject to redemption prior to maturity at the option of the city on March first, twenty twenty-eight or any date thereafter. Said notes are redeemable as whole or in part and if in part for maturities selected by the city and within each maturity by lot at the principal amount thereof plus accrued interest to the date of redemption. Section four, form of the notes. The notes shall be issued in registered form and shall be executed and delivered in substantially the form attached hereto as it exhibits C and incorporate, and incorporated herein by this reference. Section five, tax provisions. A, direct annual irrepealable tax levy. For the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the notes as the same becomes due, the full faith, credit and resources of the city are hereby irrevocably pledged and there is hereby levied upon all of the taxable property of the city, a direct annual irrepealable tax in the years twenty twenty-one through twenty thirty for the payments due in the years twenty twenty-two through twenty thirty-one and the amount set forth on the schedule. B, tax collection. So long as any part of the principal of or interest on the notes remains unpaid, the city shall be and continue without power to repeal such levy or obstruct the collection of said tax until all such payments have been made or provided for. After the issuance of the notes, said tax shall be from year to year carried on to the tax roll of the city and collected in addition to all other taxes and in the same manner and at the same time as other taxes of the city for said years are collected, except that the amount of tax carried on to the tax roll may be reduced in any year by the amount of any surplus money in the debt service fund account created below. C, additional funds. If at any time there shall be on hand insufficient funds for the aforesaid tax levy to meet principal and/or interest payments on said notes when due, the requisite amount shall be paid from other funds of the city then available, which some shall be replaced upon the collection of the taxes herein levied. Section six, segregated debt service fund account. A, creation and deposits. There be and there hereby is established in the treasury of the city, if one has not already been created, a debt service fund, separate and distinct from every other fund, which shall be maintained in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Debt service or sinking funds established for obligations previously issued by the city may be considered as separate and distinct accounts within the debt service fund. Within the debt service fund, there hereby is established a separate and distinct account designated as the debt service account, debt service fund account for general obligation promissory notes dated May fourth, twenty twenty-one, the debt service fund account. And such accounts shall be maintained until the indebtedness evidenced by the notes is fully paid or otherwise extinguished. There shall be deposited into the debt service fund account, I, all accrued interest received by the city at the time of delivery of the payment for the notes. Two, any premium which may be received by the city or the par value of the notes and accrued interest thereon. Three, all money raised by the taxes herein levied and any amounts appropriated for the specific purposes of meaning principal and interest on the notes when due. Four, such other sums as may be necessary at any time to pay principal of and interest on the notes when due. Five, surplus monies in the borrowed money fund as specified below. And six, such further deposits as may be required by section sixty-seven dot eleven, Wisconsin statutes. B, use and investment. No money shall be withdrawn from the debt service fund account and appropriated for any purpose other than the payment of principal of and interest on the notes until all such principal and interest has been paid in full and the notes canceled. Provided, one, the funds to provide for each payment of principal of and interest on the notes prior to the scheduled receipt of taxes from the next succeeding tax collection may invest, be invested in direct obligations of the United States of America maturing in time to make such payments when they are due or in other investments permitted by law. And two, any funds over and above the amount of such principal and interest payments on the notes may be used to reduce the next succeeding tax levy or may at the option of the city be invested by purchasing the notes as permitted by and subject to section sixty-seven dot eleven, print two, print A, Wisconsin statutes or in permitted municipal investments under the pertinent provisions of the Wisconsin statutes, permitted investments, which investments shall continue to be a part of the debt service fund account. Any investment of the debt service fund account shall at that, at all times conform with the provisions of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended the code and any applicable treasury regulations, the regulations. C, remaining monies. When all of the notes have been paid in full and canceled and all permitted, permitted investments disposed of, any money remaining in the debt service fund account shall be transferred and deposited into the general fund of the city unless the common council directs otherwise. Section seven, proceeds of the notes, segregated borrowed money fund. The proceeds of the notes, the notes, note proceeds, other than any premium and accrued interest which must be paid at the time of the delivery of the notes into the debt service fund account created above, shall be deposited into a special fund, the borrowed money fund, separate and distinct from all other funds of the city and dispersed solely for the purpose or purposes for which borrowed monies in the borrowed money fund may be temporarily invested in permitted investments. All monies, including any income for permitted investments, remaining in the borrowed money fund after their purpose or purposes for which the notes have been issued, have been accomplished and at any time any monies as are not needed in which obviously thereafter cannot be needed for such purposes shall be deposited in the debt service fund account. Section eight, no arbitrage. All investments made pursuant to this resolution shall be permitted investments, but no such investment shall be made in such a manner as would cause the notes to be arbitrage bonds within the meaning of section four, one forty-eight of the code or the regulations and an officer of the city charged with the responsibility for issuing the notes shall certify as to facts, estimates, circumstances and reasonable expectations and existence on the date of delivery of the notes to the purchaser, which will permit the conclusion that the notes are not arbitrage bonds within the meaning of the code or regulations. Section nine, compliance with federal tax laws. Print A, the city represents and covenants that the projects financed by the notes and the ownership, management and use of the projects will not cause the notes to be quote, private activity bonds on vote within the meaning of section one forty-one of the code. The city further covenants that it shall comply with the provisions of the code to the extent necessary to maintain the tax exempt status of the interest in the notes, including, if applicable, the rebate requirements of section one forty-eight, print F of the code. The city further covenants that it will not take any action, omit to take any action or permit the taking or omission of any action within its control, including without limitation, making or committing any use of the proceeds of the notes. If taking, permitting or admitting to take such, such action would cause any of the notes to be an arbitrage bond or private activity bond within the meaning of the code or would otherwise cause interest on the notes to be included in the gross income of the recipients thereof for federal income tax purposes. The city clerk or other officer of the city charged with the responsibility of issuing the notes shall provide an appropriate certificate of the city certifying that the city can and covenanting that it will comply with the provisions of the code and regulations. Print B, the city also covenants to use its best efforts to meet the requirements and restrictions of any different or additional federal legislation which may be made applicable to the notes, provided that in meeting such requirements, the city will do so only to the extent consistent with the proceedings authorizing the notes and the laws of the state of Wisconsin to the extent that there is a reasonable period of time in which to comply. Section ten, designation as qualified tax exempt obligation. The notes are hereby designated as qualified tax exempt obligations for purposes of section two sixty-five of the code relating to the ability of financial institutes to deduct from income for federal income tax purposes. Interest expense that is allocable, allocable to carrying and acquiring tax exempt obligation. Section eleven, execution of the notes, closing, professional services. The notes shall be issued in printed form, executed on behalf of the city by the manual or facsimile signatures of the mayor and city clerk authenticated if required by the fiscal agent defined below. Sealed with its official or corporate seal if any, or a facsimile thereof and delivered to the purchaser upon payment to the city of the purchase price thereof plus accrued interest to the date of delivery, the closing. The facsimile signature of either of the officers executing the notes may be imprinted on the notes in lieu of the manual signature of the officer, but unless the city has contracted the fiscal agent to authenticate the notes, at least one of the signatures appearing on each note shall be a manual signature. In the event that either of the officers whose signatures appear in the notes shall cease to be such officers before the closing, such signatures shall nevertheless be valid and sufficient for all purposes to the same extent as if they have remained in office until the closing. The aforesaid officers are hereby authorized and directed to do all acts and execute and deliver the notes and all such documents, certificates and acknowledgements as may be necessary and convenient to effectuate the closing. The city hereby authorizes the officers and agents of the city to enter into on its behalf agreements and contracts in conjunction with the notes, including but not limited to agreements and contracts for legal, trust, fiscal agency, disclosure and continuing disclosure and rebate calculation services. Any such contract heretofore entered into in conjunction with the issuance of the notes is hereby ratified and approved in all respects. Section twelve, payment of the notes, fiscal agent. The principal of and interest on the note shall be paid by Associated Trust Company, National Association, Green Bay, Wisconsin, which is hereby appointed as the city's registrar and fiscal agent pursuant to the provisions of section sixty-seven dot ten, print two, Wisconsin statutes, the fiscal agent. The city hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk or other appropriate officers of the city to enter into a fiscal agency agreement with this, between the city and the fiscal agent. Such contract may provide, among other things, for the performance of the fiscal agent of the functions listed in Wisconsin statutes sixty-seven, ten, print two, print A to print J where applicable with respect to the notes. Section thirteen, persons treated as owners, transfer of notes. The city shall cause books for the registration and for the transfer of the notes to be kept by the fiscal agent. The person in whose name any note shall be registered shall be deemed and regarded as the absolute owner thereof for all purpose and payment of either principal or interest on any note shall be made only to the registered owner thereof. All such payments shall be valid and effectual to satisfy and discharge the liability upon such note to the extent of the sum or some so paid. Any note may be transferred by the registered owner thereof by surrender of the note at the office of the fiscal agent duly endorsed for the transfer or accompanied by an assigned, assignment duly executed by the registered owner or his attorney duly authorized in writing. Upon such transfer, the mayor and city clerk shall execute and deliver in the name of the transferee or transferees a new note or notes of a like aggregate principal amount, serious in maturity and the fiscal agent shall record the name of each transferee and the registration book. No registration shall be made to the bearer. The fiscal agent shall cancel any note surrendered for transfer. The city shall cooperate in any such transfer and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute any new note or notes necessary to effect any such transfer. Section fourteen, record date. The fifteenth day of the calendar month next preceding each interest payment date shall be the record date for the notes, the record date. Payment of interest on the notes on any interest payment date shall be made to the registered owners of the notes as they appear on the registration book of the city at the close of business on the record date. Section fifteen, utilization of the depository trust company book entry only system. In order to make the notes eligible for the services provided by the depository trust company, New York, New York, DTC, the city agrees to the applicable provisions set forth in the bank issuer letter of representations which the city clerk or other authorized representative of the city has authorized and directed to execute and deliver to DTC on behalf of the city to the extent an effective banker issuance letter of representations is not presently on file in the city clerk's office. Section sixteen, official statement. The common council hereby approves the preliminary official statement with a respect to the notes and deems the preliminary official statement as final as of its date for purposes of SEC Rule fifteen C two dash twelve, promulgated by the secretary, excuse me, by the Securities and Exchange Commission pursuant to the Securities and Exchange Act of nineteen thirty-four, the rule. All actions taken by officers of the city in connection with the preparation of such preliminary official statement, any, any agenda to it or final official statement are hereby ratified and approved. In connection with the closing, the appropriate city official shall certify the preliminary official statement and any addenda or final official statement. The city clerk shall cause copies of the preliminary official statement and any addenda or final official statement to be distributed to the purchaser. Section seventeen, undertaken, undertaking to provide continuing disclosure. The city hereby covenants and agrees for the benefit of the owners of the notes to enter into a written undertaking, the undertaking if required by the rule to provide continuing disclosure of certain financial information and operating data and timely notices of the occurrence of certain events in accordance with the rule. The undertaking shall be enforceable by the owners of the notes or by the purchaser on behalf of such owners, provided that the rights of the owners and the purchaser to enforce the undertaking shall be limited to a right to obtain specific performance of the obligations thereunder. And any failure by the city to comply with the provision of the undertaking shall not be an evident, an event of default with respect to the notes. To the extent required under the rule, the mayor and the city clerk or other officer of the city charged with the responsibility for issuing the notes shall to provide a continuing disclosure certificate for inclusion in the transcript of proceedings, setting forth the details and terms of the city's undertaking. Section eighteen, record book. The city clerk shall provide and keep the transcript of proceedings as a separate record book, the record book and shall record a full and correct statement of every step or proceeding had or taken in the course of authorizing and issuing the notes in the record book. Section nineteen, bond insurance. If the purchaser determines to obtain municipal bond insurance with respect to the notes, the authors of the city are authorized to take all actions necessary to obtain such municipal bond insurance. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to agree such additional provisions as the bond insurer may reasonably request and which are acceptable to the mayor and the city clerk, including provisions regarding restrictions on investment of note proceeds, the payment procedure under the municipal bond insurance policy, the rights of the bond insurer in the event of default and payment of the notes by the bond insurer and notices to be given to the bond insurer. In addition, any references required by the bond insurer to the municipal insurance policy shall be made in the form of note provided herein. Section twenty, conflicting resolutions, severability, effective date. Section 20, conflicting resolutions, severability, effective date. All prior resolutions, rules, or other actions of the common council or any parts thereof in conflict with the provisions hereof shall be and the same are hereby rescinded insofar as the same made so conflict. In the event that any one or more provisions hereof shall for any reason be held to be illegal or invalid, such illegality or invalidity shall not affect any other provisions hereof. The foregoing shall take effect immediately upon adoption and approval in the manner provided by law. Adopted, approved, and recorded April 13, 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 84, 2020.
Motion by Brown, second by Fuddy. Any further discussion? Andrew, please tell me we were required to read that and let's float.
You're technically not. You've been doing half the first readings of resolutions, but you're not required to read it, but you're reading it anyway. That said, I recommend this to you, and you should approve it. By the way, it's appropriately done, you should do it.
It's all time for you all to wake up now. Storytime's over.
Can I hear sections 13 through?
It's been recorded, you can listen to it later.
In the future, Andrew, after we're into it for 10 minutes, please intervene and tell us that we don't have to continue for the next 20, would you?
Absolutely.
I thought you were opening the bottle to give me a drink, but anyway.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Cheryl, you did a fine job.
For sure.
Kevin, report back, those things don't have to be that long.
Yeah, no, in the future, the first six lines are totally appropriate. It's been a long time since I've actually, you know, gone through it in that much detail. Nicely done.
It's a good recap for you.
There's a motion and second on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Grant.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Resolution 84, 2020 is passed.
Resolution 85, 2020 is much shorter and has to do with MSA being able to help us with economic development within our city, mainly, or I shouldn't say mainly, potentially looking at housing within the community to help with auto pet care. They're looking to encourage their employees to stay in the area, to continue to work, and our community needs some housing, some good housing to help with that. CDBG is based upon L and M, what we call low to moderate income, and, but we need someone to help to administer this because there's a lot of details that have to be taken care of it. And so, the finance committee is recommending in this resolution that we hire MSA. We did have another Conco Engineering, got an estimate from them as well, and based upon the services that MSA has done for us in the past, we chose MSA. They did come in higher as far as their quote, however, they have agreed to meet us at the lower price. Resolution 85, 2020. Approve agreement with MSA for CDBG dash ED grant application administration. Whereas the finance committee has reviewed a request from Auto Pet Care to apply for a CDBG dash ED grant to assist with the purchase of equipment, whereas to process the submittal of the application administration and to ensure that the city of Juneau is in compliance with the requirements of this grant, a proposal was requested and submitted from Conco Engineering and MSA Engineering in the amount of $18,250 respectively, as shown in exhibit A. Whereas the finance committee recommends acceptance of the proposal from MSA at a cost of $18,250. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendations passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this 13th day of April 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 85, 2020.
Second. Motion by Brown, second by Granton. Any further discussion? Anything you'd like to add, Joe?
Just want to make sure we're on the same page, but the CDBG ED is actually an application that will be applied on behalf of the applicant. We are looking into housing and other funding options for you along with it. We do want the residents here, but this is just step one in order to get them the funding in order to be able to do it and create jobs and economic growth, which is what the grant is for. There is other things in place that we're also working on on the exact same issue. So, it is a mutual partnership that we have with the business along with the community and seeing that there's a need, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware that we are actually submitting something on behalf of them in order to get the funding from just the government, so.
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but what happens is these funds have to be run through the city in order to, so we are the conduit, more or less, for these funds to be.
You are the resource that they're utilizing. It's very common for communities to help out the business in order for them to invest. I mean, they're creating a tax base, they're coming in here, we'll be working with them hand in hand, but because of it, it gives us the opportunity with other mechanisms to help out with your housing shortage need. So, it goes hand in hand, but at the end of the day, I just want to make sure that we're kind of doing it on behalf of them to bring them in and help them along.
Any questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Granton.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Resolution 85, 2020 has passed. Anything else in finance, Cheryl?
I think that's probably enough.
You did not talk to them?
Personnel, Paul?
We did not meet, I have nothing to report.
Public safety, John?
Oh, we had a meeting. Chief Beal passed out the January, February reports. There were 377 contacts. Beal did state that first year did not go well as we lost two squad cars in four days. One of them should have been done the following week and should be in service, and the second car is being built and should be delivered beginning of May and in service in June. We discussed an approved extension for premises for the 1850s, they're going to do a beanbag tournament. I have a resolution on that after my report. And then we also discussed a sidewalk cafe ordinance. Sean Hunt has been working on compiling ordinances from other municipalities for the, to allow business to expand their premises to create outdoor seating out on the sidewalk for serving food and beverages. Right now, Rolling Stone has one, they have additions to their building in the backs to purpose of consume alcohol outside rather than inside. So, we get some stuff together on that, and there's two ways they can do it. They can have just where they set up chairs and then take them down at night, and they can also put up a permanent structure. Brent Bowman was there, and he's kind of molding more of a permanent structure, but he'd have to go through a plan commission and getting that, we're just kind of in the first stages of this. And we thought we could bring up just have like a pilot program, see how it works for you, and it goes to year to year. Ordnance, and they'd have to, everything has to go, because they had, the sidewalks, they can't be all the way out to the end of the road because they still have their people, you know, all walking, their dogs are walking, they still have to have room for that out by the sidewalks from the tavern, so we're still kind of working that ordinance. And I think there was going back next week, I believe, right, Sean?
Correct.
So, we'll be discussing that and seeing, get everything on that. And then we also discussed for the Juneau Community, Juneau Chamber of Commerce to block off lanes for the farmer's market. Again, we'll have some resolution on that later also. And then Dave, we had the letter of resignation from Kathy Ferrari. She's going to retire. Her last workday will be June 30, 2021. She'll be using her vacation the month of August, and her retirement date is September 1st. And we thanked her for many years. She has been employed for the city for 32 years, and she worked with Chief Beal for the last nine. Gave Dave approval to, he's thinking he's going to maybe be a part-time assistant and see if that, or he might need full time, so he's kind of looking at that. He has permission to get both a part-time and full-time, he's going to see what he's going to do and first do a part-time and go from there and see if he needs a 40-hour person in there. And that was all Dave's report, and EMS, Dan passed out his January, February reports. Their calls are kind of up, and they're very happy, they have Light Quest collecting bills for the ambulance, and they're very happy with that. Everything's going well with them. And they're kind of short-staffed and they're working with Horicon to help out, they help out of Horicon, and Horicon helps out of Juneau when they're short on people, so if anybody's interested, be in EMS or a fire department, they are definitely looking for people, so if anybody's interested or you don't know of anybody, let them get a hold of the city. And then Chief Beal, or Chief Nimmin has his report. The fire department did purchase a new UTV, and they got that in service, and that's used for grass fires and rescue services, if they got to rescue somebody out in the field or down the trail. And that's in service, and they're getting some lights and some signage on that yet. And then Dave Beal with the Emergency Government Director reminded everybody that Thursday, April 15, the sirens will go off at 1:45 and 6:45 for tornado awareness week. Just reminding all the residents, they should be prepared, ample supplies, you should have like a radio or flashlight or some food in your basement if you have to stay there for a long time. And that was kind of the report, so I have two ordinances.
Resolutions.
Resolution 86, 2020. Approve designation of parking spaces for a farmer's market. Whereas the Chamber of Commerce has reserved the parking lanes on the north side of East Oak Street between North Main Street and Miller Street for the farmer's market vending park, vendor parking. And whereas the Chamber of Commerce requests holding the farmer's market every Friday morning from 6:00 AM till 12:00 noon, May 14, 2021, to October 29, 2021. And whereas the Public Safety Committee has reviewed the request and recommends approving the farmer's market as stated above. Now therefore be resolved that the common council, the city of Juneau, accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this 13th day of April 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 86, 2020.
Motion by Schuster, second by Shanks. Any further discussion?
Do we have any history of how many people have participated, vendors have participated lately? I think it's a good thing, I just thought it curious.
My observation last year was very poorly attended.
Where was it last year? Because it was in the pig at one point.
Yeah, it has been at the pig for about.
And then ever since it moved from the pig, I had no idea where it's been.
Moving back up to the main street, I guess the vendors liked it where up there, but I.
Yeah, but I just think the participation was much better at Pigley Wiggly, but yeah, if there was one consistently up there, that was about all. Two, two tops, there was never more than a couple of.
Is there a reason it's not on a Saturday when more people would go because everyone?
You would think that would be logic, right?
You know, Friday in the morning, you're leaving for work, you know, and coming back is closed, so.
But apparently the people that participated preferred to have it up there, so I guess that's the reason.
Yeah, they wanted to move back up there.
See how it goes this year.
Yeah.
No further questions?
Last year was COVID, you know, so.
Yeah, that's true.
See how it goes.
Roll call vote, please.
Schuster.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Grant.
Aye.
Resolution 86, 2020 is passed.
All right, Resolution 87, 2020. Approve to extend premise for the 1850s Inn. Whereas the Public Safety Committee has reviewed a request from the 1850s Inn to close the corner of East Oak Street and Fair Street extending to the alley of Fair Street from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And whereas the 1850 has also requested to have the license premise extended to include the closed-off street area on Saturday, June 12, 2021, for the purpose of entertaining the public at the Dodge County Bag Toss Tournament. And whereas all hard liquor and wine coolers must be in plastic containers, and whereas the Public Safety Committee has recommended approving all across as stated above. Now therefore be resolved, common council, the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this 13th day of April 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 87, 2020.
Second. Motion by Schuster, second by Granton. Any further discussion? We basically did this a year or two ago with the Legion, they elected to hold one of those bag tournaments down by the Pigley Wiggly parking lot, so we extended their, their extension of premise down there to permit them to serve beer and soda. It's pretty much, shouldn't be a problem. They're pretty much going to be on the east side of their, their building there. They have one driveway they have to maintain access to before it gets to the alley. I'm not anticipating any problems, I don't think the chief is either, so. Any other discussion questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Granton, I'm sorry, Schuster.
Aye.
Granton.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Resolution 87, 2020 is passed. Any other questions for public safety?
All right, just to close, I'd like to thank Kathy for many years of service for the city of Juneau and wish her well in her retirement.
Very good.
That's all I got.
Moving on, public works.
Public works, there's nothing in here on it. We took a tour of the, of the facility to look at the changes that were done, improvements that were made, and the monies that were spent that were in question. We looked at the possibility of a lean-to being put on the north side of, of the north building outside the main shop, main shop, to house the Christmas decorations. There's, it's not going to, it's not feasible to put it in the building with the other trucks and trailers in the back, they're going to be in the dirt and in the light. The thought is that if we put them in a, a separate lean-to that would stay in the dark and be clean, and it lasts a lot longer that way, the plastic on it wouldn't see the sunlight. So, we're going to, Scott's going to look into possible costs of another, of a structure that we possibly put out. Trying to remember what the.
Looked at the street sweeper?
Yeah, we looked at the street sweeper, oh, and we discussed, there's a, a pipe we've got to replace underneath the street, a culvert down on East Kent Street, and the businesses that it's going to affect, we're looking at contacting those businesses to see when, when the timeframe is that they do the most of their driving on the streets so we can not conflict with those days and do the digging. It probably should take two days to replace the culvert is the rough estimates. So, we're trying to figure out how the people going to get down there, possibly we can use a trail if it's necessary for those two days to get people to those businesses down there that would be affected. Remember anything else?
You have other questions for Dave? Seeing none, we'll move on.
George, I only had one question, is if, do we have a timeline when construction will begin on Island Street, the bidding and so forth?
Not as of yet, Jane.
What is that?
Not as of yet.
Okay, I've just been getting lots of inquiries and I wanted to let them know.
I think they said that'd be like the second phase later this summer when they were construction, because we, the bids were in close enough to do it, the spring years will be later this summer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else for public works? Seeing none, cable TV, Jane?
We did not meet, we probably will be later this month.
Thank you. CD? Did we meet? I think so.
We didn't either, no.
Nope, didn't meet, or did we meet? Yeah, we did meet. We did meet, we met with Fox City Builders in regards to automatic care as project down there. We did have a tour of the facility, and that was very informative. We did meet back here, went over the particulars of. care project down there. We did have a tour of the facility. And that was very informative. We did meet back here, went over the particulars of construction. The onsite visit was very helpful for the people that aren't real familiar with construction and whatever, to be able to look over their existing facility and how they're going to mesh the new one hundred and fifty thousand square foot facility onto the existing. Didn't take any action that night other than going on record that we support their expansion. Oh, any questions on that? Seeing none, we'll move to recreation.
We did meet. Seamus presented some policies to us. However, after a long discussion, we decided to table it till this month's meeting so we can do a rewrite of it and we could, you know, kind of look at it and have some more time to read over it. We also discussed and took action on the splash pad to give Seamus approval to bring in commercial recreation specialists. What they're going to do is they're going to go off into the city and find the most ideal spot in the city to put a splash pad. And then they'll tell us whether or not we could put one here in the city and how big it could be and kind of give us some direction on it so we can start looking at pricing. Outside of that, Seamus gave us the report, let us know how all the programs have been going so far. As Janet said earlier, they did a joint little program with the library that went over pretty well. Seamus has a summer booklet out. It's been out for a while, as well as the new recreation website is now live. You can sign up for the summer programs for your kids on there. You can pay for them on there via credit card. It's very smooth and very easy. And yeah, outside of that, nothing else.
Any questions for Paul?
Can you describe?
Can I just ask about the summer programs? If it's kind of comparable to what's been offered in the past?
Yes, for the most part. He did change a couple of things, like the U-five soccer from being actual games to being more of a educational lesson type situation where hopefully they'll have enough kids playing at that towards the end of the weeks of it. They'll actually be able to scrimmage the kids to, you know, see what they've learned and help it out just because that age group has, to the point where it's a lot of kids just running around. You'll get the one or two kids that are, you know, have been playing with their parents or older siblings. They get it. But for the most part, you're just, that's a ball of kids moving around and kicking each other's shins. And we're trying to get away from that. I have a child who will be in it. And so I'm actually looking forward to her learning some of the skills at the age of four versus just throwing her out there and she's just going around, learn nothing. And then when she's up to the upper grades, you know, those coaches, I think they'll be a little bit, you know, more appreciative that these kids have some of these skills. Outside of that, it sounds like most of the summer programs are the same, as well as I believe some of the programs actually have better rates, like the Calahari trip ones. He was able to negotiate and get better rates for that than what we had in the past and a few other things. But it's all in the booklet, so.
So for soccer, the only division that was affected is U-five. It'll be more educational.
Correct, yep.
Then, that's good. Thank you.
Yep.
Richard?
Could you make a, could you give us a description of what the splash pad is?
So aquatic park, basically it's going to be a giant cement area that's going to have different shoots of fountains of water. They'll be coming out in different like overhanging buckets that'll splash down through younger kids who want to use it. We don't have a pool in Juneau or really anything aquatic for them to use. So to try to keep the kids in community here versus them going to West Bend, Horicon, Fox like to use their aquatic areas. It'll give us an opportunity, you know, another outdoor activity for the youth to use.
How much is the hope, what's the...
The game plan is to hopefully have it all paid for via grants and donations. Now, the thing could run all the way up to two hundred thousand dollars. We don't know. We have no idea how big of one we can get. So we don't have any idea on the cost of one quite yet. But Seamus is already working with Walmart, Campbell's, there's a couple other ones that he was looking, already applying for grants for it. So we already actually had grants written and applied for. And a couple of them already have been approved. There was a matching grant, I think it was up to a hundred thousand dollars. I can't remember who it was through. But they're willing to do a matching grant. So if we raise money to the city, they'll match it up to, I believe it was a hundred thousand dollars. Do you know who that was, that grant was through?
Oh, our town foundation tree.
There you are. So.
Do you have a location where you plan on putting this up or not?
We discussed a couple of different places. We were really looking at hopefully trying to put it out, Wild Goose Park area where, you know, we're on the way to Community Gardens are. But we found out that's not city property, so we can't do that. So right now we're looking at putting it actually at City Park or by the recreation, the community center. So potentially maybe even we move the sand volleyball pit somewhere else and we put it in that location. But like I said, the company, it's called Commercial Recreation Specialists. They're going to come and they're going to go through the city with Seamus and they're going to tell us what they feel are the most ideal spots to be able to put it. And it's based off of where there's, you know, accessible water lines to come in. And then depending on where they put it, there's a couple of different systems. There's a system that has a, you know, different types of water recycling and filtering, runoff and different things like that. So it all depends on where it's put and what, and that kind of encourages what costs it'll have. So if they have to put more into it to keep them having tons and tons of runoff versus if it's an area with high drainage, they could put a little less, you know, work into it. Costs a little less money. So, but right now, just the kind of thoughts that we've had so far is, you know, looking to try to put it around the city park. Because we kind of want it somewhere a bit, you know, somewhat sunny and open and also have other things for the kids to do.
So you first now got to run this, be there all the time and it's open or not?
It'll be fenced around it. There'll be a button that you'll be able to push. It'll start it up and it'll tie on after a while. And if their kids are still playing, they'll just go run and they'll slap the button again and they'll start back up.
I think it's basically for kids like eight and under.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
It's not.
Yeah, you're going to have...
There's no regulation. You don't have to have a lifeguard or nothing there.
Nope, nope, nope. There's not going to be any sitting water, you know, puddles. If there is any water, it's going to be, like I said, overhead and, you know, water will fill up in a bucket and it'll tip over and splash the kids kind of thing. But besides that, you know, there'll be regulations and policies all over the fence around it, you know, basically.
I think it's imperative to be in close proximity to bathrooms.
Yep.
That's why we kicked around like the Wild Goose Park, you know, and what have you. We thought if there was any runoff, it would find its way to the ditch there and what have you. But yeah, it's basically a water saver system, you know, you don't have to, it's not like it's going to cost you tons of water. The thing is, does get filtered underneath and recycled.
Yep.
Reclaimed, so.
It'll be nice.
It's a good thought. I mean, it's a kind of a poor man's water park, but I think it's a good place for kids on a hot day to be able to go and cool down and what have you. Mothers to take their younger kids too.
Okay.
Sean, if you want to go run out there, we won't stop you.
You can take your grandchildren then. It would love some money.
All right.
I'm just going to go because I just remembered again. There is a concern in regards to this splash pad. I do know it was verbalized at the utility meeting that please keep them informed of what's going on because there would be potential costs in regards to utilities and the city as a whole.
Yep.
Would end up paying for those utilities and infrastructure and that type of thing. And those pieces, they do wish to be included in those conversations. At this point in time, the comment was, we heard they want to do this splash pad. We know nothing. So I'm going to ask, please continue to communicate with the utility.
And I believe, I believe the company that's coming out will not be up till May to do any kind of looking or inspection. And this isn't something that's going to get done until probably twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two or after. So it's nothing that we're going to be able to push forward for the summer or try to because we haven't started the fundraising or anything along those lines. So there's plenty of time that we'll be able to get with utility once they, you know, this company comes in and says, you know, here's our three suggestions. They present them to us and we'll be able to look into see, you know, what the total cost will be. So hopefully we can actually put that cost of the utility into.
Well, in any continued cost that you may have. Because even though you reclaim water, some of it's going to evaporate. And so it must be put back in. And there is a cost to water.
Absolutely.
Any questions for Paul? Moving on, utility commission. Richard?
Yep, we had a meeting. We had a meeting last Monday. It was a three-hour meeting, which I think we reduced to one sheet.
Come on, come on, Dick. Where's the...
Or we can listen to Cheryl. We mean the three hours.
Point twelve, twelve to fifteen?
Excuse me. Matt Castillo from MSA met with the commission to discuss the wastewater treatment plan upgrade options. And he was directed to pursue the oxidation ditch option and report back on the financial impact. And Tom Unki from Baker Tilly was also there. And he talked to the commission about funding options for the project. And he suggested and recommended the clean water fund program, which now has a low interest rate and possible grants are available. And he's also working on the new contract with Sensient. Getting this done is a high priority. And he's going to work with Tim and his team to determine the usage limits and rates. There's important news for the community. The moratorium for delinquent customers has been lifted and disconnections will begin on the week of April nineteenth. If you are overdue on your utility bill, please contact the utility office to arrange payments. Another retirement, Alice Gens has officially retired now as a utility accountant. I don't know how many years she's been.
Twenty-one.
Bless a lot of service in the past months. And Lori Runyon is her replacement. And of course, we thank Alice for her years of good service. Nick Galman reported on possible issues that will affect the electrical department concerning the Highland Street project. There's a conflict with AT&amp;T as to who is responsible for the cost of moving their wires if underground service is pursued. With the widening of the streets, the curbs will be at or very near the existing poles. And he's also researching who is responsible for the cost of meter socket replacement if the service goes underground. Tim Gazner reported that well two, well number two has passed testing for radium levels and the well is being used as a backup at this time. A lateral leak occurred on home road causing a sinkhole. Resident water meters are being tested and customers are being notified of high water consumption, of high water consumption possibly caused by leaks. Tim shared concerns about the effect of the new splash pad at the treatment plant. Iron Ridge requested consolidation with our wastewater treatment plant. This would involve piping the waste from Iron Ridge to our plant. Mayor Wagner expressed that the commission had previously gone on record that the wastewater treatment plant capacity should be for the taxpayers of the city. And the motion to reject the request was passed and they will be notified by letter. Summer help position is being posted. Six hundred and forty hours have been budgeted. This employee will work primarily for the electrical department and will work one day a week, will work primarily for the electrical department and will work one day a week working for the water utility surveying homes for lead laterals. Utility President Affelt raised his concern over the poor financial position of the wastewater department. While the electrical and water utilities are in good shape, the sewer utility is operating in the red. Losses in the last year are due to high chemical costs, need for a new contract with Sensient and possible insufficient sewer rates. He requested that commissioners bring ideas to next month's meetings to address this problem. And that's three hours.
Thank you, Richard. Any questions?
Just a statement. If someone from the wastewater department or the water department contacts you and says, we have a report that you have high water usage here, they're doing it for your favor because you're paying for that. And there really is a problem somewhere, whether it's your toilet is running, you have a broken pipe somewhere. They want to help you. So if they come to your home and ask to come into your home, they're not just taking a lunch break. They're looking for chocolate chip cookies. They really, they have work to do and there are certain things that have to be completed. And so help them with that. Finding the summer help that they're bringing on, we have got to report back to the DNR lead services within our homes and who has it and who doesn't. It is not something we as a city want to do. It is something we're required to do. So if they're coming to your home or they leave a door hanger on your door, say, please get in touch with us. We really need your help. Please, 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 please help us out here. Help yourself out here.
Good point. And the replacement of your lead water service is also imperative to your good health. It has been determined that lead in the water does have an adverse effect on everybody, especially mothers expecting and young children. So if you suspect you have a lead water service, either confirm it with a plumbing professional or ask the utility to come in. But yeah, we are looking for those surveys to be complete so that we have an accurate report of the services that have to be replaced in town. And then as far as the water and electric meters, the advancement in technology on both of them, everybody's instinct is when they get a high water bill or high electric bill, there's something wrong with my meter. No. The odds are way, way against that happening. A meter will, like I said, the advancement in that technology today, you're more apt to have a no reading if you got a bad water meter than one that's going to advance itself and have a reading that's false and have you expecting an accelerated rate. It just doesn't happen, so. Other than that, anything else from utilities tonight? The concerns of our utility president is well spoken there. We've made some advancements from the water and electric department to the sewage utility. And we've got to get caught up on that. And the sooner we get a contract with our major sewer user in town, the better so that we can start, stop the bleeding. So other than that, moving on, old business in the old business tonight. New business, a reminder, we have our organizational meeting next week. I will be accepting any comments from any of the council members in regards to their appointments. I'm not one to move people around woolly manilly. If you're happy with your appointments, you might be there again in the same position. If you're not happy or you would like to get on another committee, please get in contact with me before Friday. Otherwise, there'll be very little changes if any. We've got some people that are taking over chairman slots on a couple of committees. And I want to give them a couple, or at least another year to get their feet wet in their departments, so. So if you're happy.
I was just wondering, I'm sorry, mayor.
Nope, go ahead, Jane.
I was just wondering, has open book and border review dates been set yet?
Sean?
They have what they are off the top of my head. I'm not quite sure. Give me a second.
That meeting is next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Here at seven?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Think. I think it's seven.
Usually the assessor sets those with the clerk treasurer?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the dates.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
She aerates her lawn with her heels, which I bet surprises her. It's a good, good growing season.
So she's mad. How's she lose cases other?
That doesn't happen very often.
Who's somebody here?
Uh, he's just...
He's looking for information.
So Tuesday, six thirty?
Sean, is it six thirty or seven for the organization?
That is up to you, mayor.
It'll be seven.
Appreciate that. We're going to, we're going to go vacation, right?
Sure. She was asking me about it today, about appointments. So if you're happy with where you are, you're bound to be there again next year.
All right, sounds good.
Well, you got no changes. I mean, no, everybody's kind of, reelections.
Call it in.
Yeah, we're all good.
We're all good.
Nobody changed. I suppose I won't get home without getting a phone call.
Open book is May third, and that's conducted by phone or email or Zoom through with Boomer Appraisals. Board of Review will be May twenty-fourth from six PM until eight PM.
Okay, May third are their hours? Did I miss that? Did I miss that?
Um.
Only the primaries have to be there.
What?
Border View, only the primaries have to be there, not the alternates unless there's.
Uh, they just have regular business hours, eight thirty to four thirty.
Perfect, all right, thank you so much.
That's attorney meeting.
I won't be there, I was there last year.
So again, at least try to get ahold of me by Thursday if you're unhappy or you would like to be on another committee. Veronica's got to get those notices out. My appointment should be with those. That's all I have. Approved provisional license, bartender's license?
I guess some other new business.
Oh, excuse me.
I had a couple of calls, one city hall might open up.
We have one on record is opening up the utility office now. Like, did I ask Sean? I don't know if I got an answer or not. I guess you were going to kick it around with your help, but the utility office is now presently open for business.
With, I guess with majority of the business being able to be done through our drive-through window here at the new city hall, I've been kind of just waiting for kind of countywide test, positive tests come kind of consistent and within that five percent range, I was kind of hoping. If council would like to direct me to open it up, I guess we can. But again, I've just kind of been waiting for us to be kind of a consistent five percent positive rate on a weekly basis.
Jane, can I ask you what you're doing in Columbus?
We are still closed.
And do you have any plans on opening soon?
Uh, we do not right now. People can come in though by appointment or they ring the doorbell and we meet them at the door to see what their business is and then that warrants whether we leave them in or not.
Pretty much clones what we're doing here.
Correct.
Thank you.
Do we have that much business, do you think, that would be coming inside?
I don't.
Because, I mean, we've got the drive-up service and there's so many people using it.
I mean, if they need to speak with the building inspector, they can make an appointment with him and come in and see him on Wednesdays. But all and pretty much every other kind of business can be handled through the drive-through.
I will let them know.
And if they have specific needs that they need to speak with either I or someone else with them, I mean, we can definitely make an appointment for them, Doc.
Wonderful.
Go in and have a conversation.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval of bartender's license, a provincial license for forty-five days, recommend approval for Janine A. Krieger. Is there a motion of that effect? Motion by Schuster.
Second.
Second by Granton.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Recommend regular bartenders for twenty twenty expires June thirtieth, twenty one, twenty twenty-one. Recommend approval for Janine Krieger, Zachary Roloff and Aurora Zamora, Aurora Zamora. Is there a motion of that effect? Motion by Evans. Second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Entertained a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Schuster. Second by Shanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. This meeting is closed.